Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Clearing.
Here.
Eric, here.
Meyer, here.
Here.
Coleman?
Here.
Waylon?
Here.
Anyone from the audience that we should address the board? If not, reports of the village commissions, certification committee, trustee here.
Baskets are up, floggers have been planted. I see they have the banners up and all the flags, and they look really nice. And we have me in our...
Fourth of July commission trustee Coleman?
Yeah, sold tickets yesterday at the Tri-City Chevy Show on the 2014 Camaro, which was very successful. Also, the flyers or the folders, brochures will be ready shortly, the four-page colored brochure, so we'll be ready to hand those out. Plus, there's some posters out on the beef roast and the Fourth of July activities, so things are coming together.
Youth commission trustee Coors?
We've got a couple of things coming up. On June 12th and 13th, it's a two-day course, the youth commission, in partnership with the police department, is doing BLAST. It's a course for babysitter lessons and safety training. It's for kids 11 years old enough. They're going to get some basic first aid, how to prepare a body correctly, and just get certified to babysit. It's a positive thing. It's free for all Beecher residents. Other towns that do this typically charge us a fee of $75. I know Crete's $75 to do this. We're offering it for free for Beecher residents. And then June 21st is the amazing race, so that's it.
Dr. Hope, trustee Wayne?
Yes, we just received another donation, so our balance is around $8,200. I don't have anything to report at this time.
Have they had a meeting?
No.
Are they called, or?
There was scheduling issues, starting at late April, beginning of May, and then it's just been tired. It's tough together, ready together.
Silent.
Trustee Cleary for the charges?
Okay.
Okay. You flipped at the account balances. For me, it was a better month for us, the tax payments were starting to come in. So we're at $1 million eight as of May 31st for the village accounts only, which is behind a year ago. It's primarily the building. It's still residual from our road projects, I think. But if you look down on the highlights and some lowlights of the changes we've had on it, there's a couple of large debt payments in May for sewer expansion, which is, I believe, about five days left. From that, that large loan into our middle bank consolidation, $700,000 consolidation, what we're going to do in May and pay to me. The bills were, or water bills were out and collected on, so we were showing them the $76 increase in the Omen M account. And then down in general, you'll see the $240,000. That is the result of two sets of real estate taxes that have come in in May. So, down to the commissions, there's not a lot of things happening, like Fourth of July, I don't think probably speak to that, but I think some contributors to your group outdated your expenditures, so that showed $11,000 increase. And the asset for for sure, I believe we sold a truck. And youth commission had a fundraiser that will produce a project for them. So that's basically the village and the commission accounts. The next page, you know, is the graph representation of the village account, which shows the uptick and which we've seen each May. If you go back in time on here, which is good, fully expected, the amount of stuff we see, so that looks nice to see it go up for months, for me anyway, over the last many months. The Dixie Highway account, the only activity there was we paid a real estate bill that we contractually had agreed to, that $4,000. Otherwise, our most many expenditure activity in May. And then finally, the last page of my section, you've got the details of the bills. Primarily, you've got, once again, payroll related expenses, things involve with our payroll. You look down at $190,000 for water and sewer. That's where those two large loan payments were made, which made up the bulk of the expenditure, the extra expenditure over a month or a whole month. Otherwise, a good month, but nothing exceptional.
Any questions on the treasure?
Yes. How much did that Ford pick up so far?
I don't know if I know the number off the top of my head.
$6,000?
$6,000.
$50.
$6,050.
Yes. Yeah, it's on the sheet there, the PD, asset seizure, I think there was like a dollar seventy-four in interest, but you see the change was $6,051 and like eighty-four cents. And that was a deposit, the $6,050 plus the interest.
How many bids did you get on that?
Thirty-eight.
Thirty-eight bids.
And the top ten bids were all $4,600 or above. And our opening bid was $2,500.
That concludes my report.
Any other questions on the treasure? To make the motion approving the treasure report for the prior year? Second?
Motion, there is a second. Any questions to the motion? Roll call.
Yes.
Eric?
Yes.
Meyer?
Yes.
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 After the treasure's report is a various report for the month of April. Anybody have any questions on that?
Mr. Chairman Nelson had it out of Fourth of July. It's all right. Beginning to get a little money in, mostly through sponsors and vendors, but we're still spending more than we're taking in, or have spent more than we're taking in. Most of it in the car and deposits for the vans. We've got about $25,000 in revenue so forth this year. And we spent a little over $30,000 this year so far. So we're about $5,400 behind revenues. And if you do the parking expenses, you've got about $9,500 spent in the park. So we're about $15,000 behind revenue, but that'll catch up in a few weeks, June 1st, July 1st.
Any questions of the Fourth of July treasure? Bills are provided to us by email. Bob has also indicated in bold some additional bills that came in after he was gone Thursday. The largest one you're going to notice is all pro paving. They'll be completed with their work by the end of this week, so the plan is to provide Bob a check based on the completion of the repairs of our roads. And then he'll provide them the check. This would complete their responsibility to the village. Everybody have any questions concerning the bills? If you don't, I make a motion approving the bills for May 2014 in a total of $172,483.88.
Motion number four and over the second. Any questions to the motion? Roll call.
Waylon?
Yes.
Coleman?
Yes.
Combs?
Yes.
Meyer?
Yes.
Here?
Yes.
The next item on our list has to do with an intergovernmental agreement with EastCom, and it's concerning their use of the water tower for a communication link right now. We kind of sit in a dead space, and they're trying to kind of increase the coverage in our area for both the police and fire. The issue right now is how they're going to attach the additional antenna to the tower itself. There is a proposal that they've provided us. This is kind of an agreement that we're making with them, as well as Peatone's doing a similar thing to try to create a full grid on the south side of the EastCom area. The concern I had when I saw this was their plan is to drill into the tank. We just had the tank repaired, and it's in good condition. It's also one of our primary water tanks for vertical water. Other than that, we rely completely on the electrical water pumps. The water pumps, the plan right now, and what we've been able to do is use the water pressure, electric pressure from the water pumps, to keep our pressure in our system instead of a standing tank. That was what allowed us to keep the cost of putting a new vertical tank in. Although our tank is not that high, it does keep our pressure up. So the concern I have is when I see this is, you know, some more holes in the integrity of our tank. The village engineer is looking at this. There's still some debate about how to make the attachment. One of the items that they can do is it's called stud welding. It doesn't really penetrate all the way through. It's not what's called pen welding, it's not penetration welding. It welds to the outside of the tank. This is done numerous times in the industry. Normally, that I've seen, there's not any burns on the bottom side. Our tank is lined, so there's concern there that I have. So right now, the plan is to allow the village engineer to make a decision, and we would proceed down that path. I would prefer that we would use a stud welding, for the fact that it keeps the integrity of our tank.
It'll definitely be a stud welder at this point. Question becomes, how do we approve the plans and specs, and how does it get inspected? That's supposed to be the issue we have. The mayor's going to a meeting Thursday night with all of these com members and Peatone to find a common ground on that issue. It'll definitely be a stud welder at this point. The question is, how do we verify the installation? And I think we would just leave it up to the village president at that meeting to decide what's in the best interest of the village and town. But it will be a stud.
And it's got to go on the tank. It can't go on any type of railing or...
They need to be at the highest point possible. The issue they have right now is, we're kind of in a section because we're so far away from the core of EastCom that we fall into a valid dead zone. So they're trying to create a link between us and Peatone and going north. By creating that link between them, if one of those sections is cut, we're reconnecting both Peatone and Beecher. So both Peatone and Beecher need to do this to create that solid border of EastCom. And if they make that link, so one has got to point directly west facing Peatone, the other one's got to point directly north facing Chubba Heights. So you're going to have, right now, you only have one attachment, and they need to make another to get that other antenna.
We've looked at all installation options, including the railing, all of that, and stuff. The stud weld, it appears to be what it's probably going to be. We just have to finalize it.
This is a crazy idea, but what about the radio station south of town? It's got to be on our property?
That works, but you've got to pay a bunch of money just based on that tower, and we're charging ourselves. Do you know what I mean? EastCom is us, we are East...
We're part of EastCom.
We're all to have. It's just that there was a difference of opinion.
I know, I know. I mean, there's some towns where you see, you know, things, you can't even tell it's a water tower, you know?
Well, I know Rixton Park had a brand-new water tower, and there must be about 15 different tents sitting on that thing, and it just went up. But it is the tallest structure we have that we have full control over, and they need to get up high enough. And it's because we kind of sit in a very strange valley that's causing the signals to be a problem.
Yeah. Go ahead, maybe it dips.
And it's not just for us, it's also for the fire department. They are also on EastCom, so it's really increasing the integrity of the system. So any motion on this, Bob?
To approve lease agreement, subject to the approval of the village president on the installation of the tower.
Some of it.
Motion for number two.
Cleary?
Yes.
Eric?
Yes.
Meyer?
Yes.
Coleman?
Yes.
And trustee Coors handle the polls?
Consider authorizing the purchase of 27 ornamental holes from Brandon Industries in the amount of $15,671. This is for the continuation of the street name sign replacement program, which includes Hunches East, Prairie Park, and Prairie Crossings South. This installation will begin after the Fourth of July and be completed by November 1st. The last phase will be next year, when we complete Prairie Crossings and Nantucket Cove. Then it will be done with all the street name signs in the town. So I'll make a motion approving the amount of $15,671 to Brandon Industries for the purchase of 27 ornamental holes.
Second. There's a motion, there is a second. Any questions to the motion? Roll call.
Waylon?
Yes.
Coleman?
Yes.
Combs?
Yes.
Meyer?
Yes.
Eric?
Yes.
Trustee Waylon, can you handle the next item?
Okay. Consider a motion authorizing the bid of, to award a bid of, or to JDK Construction in the amount of $129,500 for remodeling of 625 Dixie Highway for the new village hall. We had talked about this at the last meeting. We had 15 bids that came in. This is the lowest bid. Last two weeks ago at our meeting, we said we needed to qualify this bid. The bid has been qualified, so I want to make a motion to award the bid to JDK Construction in the amount of $129,500.
Second. The motion number four and over the second. Any questions to the motion? Roll call.
Cleary?
Yes.
Eric?
No.
Meyer?
Yes.
Combs?
No.
Waylon?
Yes.
And Bob, how about you handle the one?
We get a request, look at the last page of your packet, turn it to the backside. Castle Town Homes has requested a withdrawal of water sewer cap on fees on lot 48 to begin construction of the project. It's a spec home, we do not have a fire, so I could spec home up, and once the CO is ready to issue, we'd pay the tap-in fees. School District United is considering the school impacts the labor, whether or not they'll defer that payment. But we're just concerned about water sewer cap, and I told him that we cannot wait. Building permit fees, we're going to pay the dependent inspections upfront, so we would charge it then. We could possibly defer the water sewer cap.
I got a question. So they're going to tap into the water system? They're going to connect to our water and our sewer? Are they going to use, they're going to use that home as a spec home? They're going to use it as a sales point? So they're going to be using the water? Are we going to have an active meter in there that we're going to be giving them a bill off of?
No, they won't be using it as a model. It'll be a spec home, and it'll just sit there empty until it's open.
So the waters, the buffalo box is going to be turned off?
Well, that, I was under the understanding that this board, we had the direction before after construction, final CO was issued, that because they used the long sprinkler, we will be putting a meter in it, and the account goes into the developer's name.
So they will be...
Isn't that what we decided a couple of years ago about?
They paid for contractor's use of water, because the meter is not going in that house until it gets close to final inspection. So we charge them, I'll say it's 25 bucks.
I'll make that. Normally, your contract, your construction fee is based on the contract of working there with minimal amount of water usage. You're talking about a guy putting a sprinkler system in. That's not minimal water usage. That's not construction water stores. To me, they're looking at putting a sprinkler system up.
No, even, no, just the, if this goes back to all the model homes that were there, and they had their lawns in, and they had the sprinklers going on their grass.
But do you think those were townhomes?
It wasn't just Prairie Park, it was Nantucket Cove, it was Prairie Crossings, and it goes back to one...
That has nothing to do with the tap-in fee, it has to do with...
I'm talking...
He asked me about the meter.
I'm talking, are we putting a meter in so we can monitor the usage? You're backed on the same property with the house up on the north side where all the copper was stolen out of it, and the basement was a pool. There's nobody in that house.
And how do you stop that?
How do you stop what?
This case study here.
I was under the understanding that if, once the final CO or once the house was approved, that a meter went in there and they used the water, whoever...
No CO is issued until a meter's installed.
We have, you've had this discussion already.
Yeah.
I think he's right, though.
I am.
Bottom line is, when the house is completed, not necessarily certain of occupancy, or not necessarily something comes in. Okay, a meter does go in, no matter how they water the grass, and to me, it does make sense.
You can't put a meter in until there's heat in the house, the meter will freeze.
There would be heat in the house. If that's the case, then the water should be shut off to the house from the buffalo box until that house has been resonant.
And one thing that's come to mind is we're trying to narrow down our bill to pump ratio.
Do you?
Bottom line is, you're going to have a house with no meter in it.
Okay, but we're dealing with two separate issues here. One issue is the tap-in fee waiver.
But he's asking the question about the meter, or trying to answer the question about the counter. I understand what you're saying.
Hold on. When they go for final inspection...
There must be a meter in the house before we do a final.
Okay.
Is that correct, Jeanette?
Yes.
Okay.
So I don't know what the issue is.
And when they do a final inspection, does that necessarily mean they're going for their CO?
Yes.
Okay. So now...
Why do you, why do you find it?
Will he... All right. Do we not do a final on a spec home?
Not until they ask for a CO.
See, you might be thinking model home. Spec home can sit there, you know, without any use, you know, no model office or anything like that. Is that what you're saying?
My worry is what happened up in Manabana, where you had a flooded basement because the water was flowing with no meter on it, and it was just pouring out the windows.
In model one? But I thought it was over here in Prairie Park.
It was Prairie Park.
It was right here down the street on Autumn Drive.
MGM. Right. Typically, what happens a lot in a home building is, like a developer like Castle Town. Right now, they've made a decision to go ahead and do a spec house. Basically, what they're doing is they're trying to keep their guys busy because they don't have any sales. I understand. So they're just trying to put something up to keep everybody busy and the ball rolling. I don't want to have another flooded basement and water uses that's on meter.
I don't think there'd be any problem with, as it goes, once they're into the house. I think once they go for their rough mechanical inspection, that means they're going to have to have a heater in.
Well, I think you have to pass a rule that after 120 days, water department shuts them, shuts the B-bots off. Your contractor's use of water is done.
That's fine. I don't have a problem with that.
I think these are two separate issues. Do you want to provide a housing incentive for people to build in this community?
Absolutely. And I think...
That's the question.
I think the tap-in fees, I mean, me personally, I don't have a problem with it. I think we can sit down as far as...
I'm trying to control where the water losses are happening, and we don't have a problem in the future.
We can just establish some sort of policy that...
And orders going out, every empty house is shut off.
Yeah.
The order's going out. If those were on, shame on us.
If we establish something where 90 days or 120 days after a building permit is issued, that either the water gets shut off, or you come in and you get the water meter installed under your name, that can then be transferred to the home or on sale at time of closing. And that can nip everything in the mud. You have no problems, and if we, you know, do defer it for this or another builder in the future or whatever, it's there. It's there for, that policy could be there forever, especially once you get builders booming, you know, and everything's cranking along. 90 days, 120 days after building permit is issued, the water, you know, that ends your free contractor water, and you have to get a water meter installed, or it gets shut off at the B-bots. And if they don't want to get the water meter installed, then they can sit without water. And they can get the water meter installed if it's not sold, and get it installed in their name until it's sold.
So you want to minimize that risk that we're driving?
The rights probably burst because there was no heat, and it was burst.
Right? Oh, I'm sorry.
I have a question. Are you going to lean these properties?
Lean what?
Please lean on the property so it's on the title that we need to get our fees either closing or prior to closing.
Did I have to add the lean fee to the property?
I'd suggest you do that, so that we don't bypass one of these and skip over it. Just lean your fees.
Recording the lean is what, 60 bucks?
Yeah, the good...
For two years?
The lien says it's only, the liens only good for so many day or so long period of time, okay?
Two years.
But you're not going to have a CO?
Yeah.
Until you get your fees, right?
There's no, I don't see it as a lien, because like Scott said...
You have something right in that, though?
If you're not, in order to get a certificate of occupancy for them to go to sale, to go to closing and sell the property, they don't pay it if you don't give them a CO. Without a certificate, without a certificate of occupancy, you can't close our property on a new construction home.
But who's to say that we're not going to, my, this is protection for, if they're at closing, the closer collects the money and pays.
I don't see a title company doing the closing, or anybody getting a loan without a certificate of occupancy for the property.
You can have that, but what I'm saying is the payment of the...
We won't give them a CO without the payment.
Okay. You're guaranteed that.
I would like to think our staff is responsible enough to handle that.
Shouldn't we do that for entire subdivision?
Because we deferred fees for one year. We had eight takers, and what happened is, some of those got to the foreclosure, and there's still one I haven't collected on, but it's not occupied. There's still one that hasn't made a tap-in fee from all of them.
But I was going to say, we caught all those, right?
Yeah, I can see what you're saying. They could fall through the cracks.
They could.
The inspector could sign off and give it to them and not see the red tag on the CO as possible.
Who gives a CO for them?
If he approves it, he gives it to us.
Yeah. Well, then Don should catch it there.
Well, Don or Patty, Patty usually keeps something in front of her building permit hook for those types of things. And then what happens if he sells this? Is he coming back and saying he needs another one now? Are we allowed that?
And that's up to you guys. I mean, at one time, we deferred water sewer tap-ins for an entire year, a period of one year, and we had eight takers. Do you know what I mean? Now, the eight, one hasn't paid yet because the house is still on.
What about if somebody does it on their own? They purchased a lot, decided that they want to build a house. Are we going to do the same thing for them?
It's up to you. I mean, you can pass a blanket rule for everybody, or just say, come and approach the board and ask. It's entirely up to you.
See, at that point, it wouldn't be a spec house. A lot of times, they'd be building their own house.
But it doesn't matter, Scott. I mean, you're going to give one person...
And we're setting precedent.
Yeah. You give one person that, why isn't the next guy getting the same thing? We're either going to do it across the board, or we're not doing this. And a spec house can sit there for years. And then what happens if it's a spec house and Castle Town fills it up? How can they ever get that fee?
Well, they couldn't sell the house until they have a subject on occupancy.
As long as somebody knows that that fee has not been collected. That's the problem. You got to make sure. That's the reason for a lien on the property. When you lean the property, payment is made when it is sold.
Kind of thing is, we, again, we've done this for one year for any home that was going to be built, and it worked then, and I'm sure it's going to work now, and I think the, what I think is encouraging is someone is trying to build a home. We eventually will get our money. If someone's trying to build a home, let's give them this option and let them build a home. And I think that's what the idea is here, is to try and get that home built, and hopefully he sells it, then we have a resident who's in. We've had a procedure in place for these tap-in fees for, if they're the way we did it earlier, we did it for eight of them, and none of those fell through the cracks. And as long as the building inspector understands, and staff understands that neither one home can have an issue without talking to each other, then there's a checking balance there. Do you want to do this just on a case-by-case basis, or do you want to do it for a period of time? So the only thing is, it may not be fair.
By the way, I suggest you have one request for one home tonight.[1732.12]